I call tonight's meeting of the Dalton Select Board to order. We have checks.
Health and engineering, they're the ones for that Smith program, right?
Yes.
What was the, what was his quote on Friday's billing or did he add?
He actually just gave us that, that invoice is part of the price. It is, I think it was 30,000. 35,000 for the construction phase.
For the Primax, how does this compare to last year?
It's attached. The last year's is in the very back, I think. It was 29.
232.
So it went up. 17% or something, 15 or 17.
Went up like $4,000.
Mm-hmm.
Ouch. We're paying off with hand, good enough.
Yes.
Good.
Was there a saving bank that money we borrowed?
Yeah. With tan.
Right.
The last meeting I had, I had the board sign the land use change tax documents. There was one document for each package that I forgot to do. So it's on the top here. I just need you guys to print, print your name on the left, sign it, and then date it. The stuff you already signed is attached in the back. I noticed I, when I went to send them out, that I was missing document. Here is the document from DRA asking us whether or not we'll be using the PA 28 as part of our assessing for 2026. I already checked the box yes, but it requires the signature of our assessing officials, which is forward.
So this is what we've done in the past. We use that inventory form. We won't continue doing that, correct?
P-18?
Yeah, 28.
Yeah. PA 28.
PA 28, excuse me, yes. So I make a motion that we continue using the PA 28 form. All in favor?
Aye. Here's a clean copy of the Stone Cypher and Clark Environmental contract with the typo corrected. If you want to sign that, you had signed it with the errors.
Yeah.
The last meeting. Meeting minutes from June 23rd.
I read, read through the second page where it says, don't air gap, no plan of action to remedy the items of post closure. That was remedied by talking to Valerie, which is going to be taking place in November. So I'd like to, that needs to be strictly written for minutes.
Then we talk, do talk about the open items. So the signs were taken care of, the methane gas for them. Still have to sort out. No, it seems like there was a third item.
The methane gas and the well testing.
The well testing. I'm okay with striking that first sentence.
Yeah.
Just recovering everything down below.
Right.
And go with that.
Yeah, I was, I was going to mention it anyway.
I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from June 3rd for that correction.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who seconded that? I'm sorry. Thank you.
And public one, two, and three.
I can say this tonight. You did a good job keeping us cool in here tonight.
Oh, thanks. So far, there's not a lot of people in here. That helps.
Last time was hot.
Keep all the expedements for POMPIS out for risk trading. Who's one that was outstanding?
I did. Yes, there was one that was outstanding. He came with literally minutes to spare.
Oops.
It was off on, on the fabric at $30,000.
Oh, yeah. I've got the printout here for you guys.
Their original price was 125.
Wow. I'm wondering what the difference is in what you guys are using and what, maybe because we're using like specific for dirt roads and where are you guys using it?
I make a motion that we accept the non-public meeting minutes numbers one, two, three, and four from June 3rd.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I've got the public hearing meeting minutes for the unanticipated funds. Those are just the handwritten notes to the, what was typed?
The amount is attached at the last, last page.
That's just my scribble.
But the the form from DRA that came with the funds is attached.
Oh, the receipt. Yeah.
Or the receipt coming. I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the public hearing on 3/23rd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it for signature.
Okay. So for old business, um, Bean property update, still waiting for Carl's signature?
The, yes, the engineer, Beans engineer dropped off the miler on Thursday. I talked to Carl, he's out this week, so he'll come by and sign it when he's back.
You have a question, that, why wouldn't pursue it if they're gonna, they're not pursuing that on their own?
Not pursuing what?
Why would we give them the property if they're not gonna buy that place?
They already bought that place, they own that place. Yes. I guess his son's not gonna move into it, but the Beans already own that property.
Okay.
Yeah. They're still planning on developing it.
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't mention that part, but.
Who, Carol or, yeah, just Nicholas and his wife are not moving into it now. There's, they still own the property and still plan to develop it.
Okay.
Yeah. At least that's what Carol told me when I talked to him two weeks ago, so.
Tom, is there an update on the conservation commission?
Yeah.
For the planning board, um, Carolyn Keats had a preliminary discussion on subdividing her, she's got thirty-four acres from Kansas, and she wants to take out three acres in the middle and have the other two pieces of it conjoined with the strip. But we, she didn't have a survey or anything yet, so she'll bring it back to the August meeting with the, um, the subdivision application. Carolyn Keats.
Carolyn.
Keats, K-E-A-T-S. And I don't think there was anything else to meet, was there? Who's community agreement? I don't think we've met since the last select board meeting.
The, the thirtieth.
You can, thank you. Um, and we discussed, the committee had been working on a list of, um, items to possibly include in an agreement, and so we had all that, wholly, right, we could buy and saw there's a lot of redundancy, it worked on that list. Um, the next meeting is July twenty-eighth. Um, the, and another next step is to have a flyer go out to, so that the public can provide input. And so we have a couple of rough drafts. Paul and Wendy are gonna look at finalizing that so that we can approve it on the twenty-eighth. And then we would have a, um, various ways that the public can provide input, they could do it online, they can come into the office, we could mail them a survey, or we'll have a, a Saturday midday meeting when they could come in and talk about their ideas, things to include in, in an agreement. Okay. We're still waiting for installation date for the solar, correct?
Correct.
And the hazard mitigation program is in progress, the next meeting is in two weeks, I believe.
She was supposed to send us the, did she send us the date? I thought she was going to send us a date, because we added July, or did we add August? I can't, Paul.
Yeah, I have it on my calendar, but that doesn't mean that that's accurate, it might have been intentionally. I have it for Wednesday, the twenty-third at two.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that it's correct.
You'll be sending the notice out on the, on our email.
For the hazard mitigation?
Yeah.
Um.
I post it. I, she usually doesn't send me the link until like the, a day or two before, so I try to post it on the calendar on the website.
I can try to remember to forward it to the select board when I get it. I can try to remember to forward it to the select board when I get it.
Um, do we need to post that as a meeting then for the board, if there's more than one person?
Maybe, are you going to participate?
In the, uh,
In the hazard.
For the hazard mitigation call?
I wanted, I wanted to, often for the hazard, I wouldn't mind listening to it, I mean, I don't know a lot about it, but I wanted to, isn't, uh, isn't there a mitigation on FEMA with FEMA too?
No, this is the, we have to have, we're required to have an emergency management plan that's updated every ten years? I think it was five years, then, maybe it was five, and then it got bumped out because of COVID.
Because of COVID, probably.
So it has roads and floodings part of it, but other natural disasters, um, things like a pandemic, so it's, it's like looking at risk and assigning like a numerical value to that risk. Um, and there's a calculation based on like the severity of an event and the likeliness of it happening. And then what we're done to mitigate the risk. And so, some of the things are, um, we have a generator for this building, and this building is an emergency center. But there's a recommendation, I think it was carried forward from the last plan, that we should have a generator at the highway department as well. You know, so things like that.
Yeah.
So it's really broad, it's over the whole town, it's not just the road part of it.
Right.
And it's all, things could happen, you know, wind, lightning, fire, anything.
Well, it's good to know, I, I, but if I go on and listen to what they have to say, if you can put it, if I can put it in, put it in, like, that, that's a few, whatever we can on.
We have the materials online?
No, because I don't, she handles, she,
She handles, handles everything. And everything.
I mean, the hazard mitigation plan, I would assume is a public document, so once it's done, it'll be available.
Right, I was gonna say, I could share it, but I hate to share a draft that's gonna change.
Right. Yep.
So if you're going to participate, let Jeanette know, so she can post it as, as, um, a select board meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, it'd be good for you to participate, you just need to plan ahead. And here's a Zoom meeting, you can come here for the Zoom, I just saw it remotely, so you don't have to drive.
Yeah, uh, Ron and Adam usually come here, and we do it in here.
Yeah.
So just let Jeanette know.
Okay, well, I'll do that.
Yeah, then I'll just post it as a working session.
The link until the day before.
It's a longer, isn't it?
It's from two to four, in the afternoon.
And it usually is a full two hours. Okay, now the FEMA and the emergency road repairs, um, is Adam coming tonight to give us an update?
He said he was when I asked him to last week, but he didn't say anything about it when I talked to him this morning, so.
Okay.
I would assume he probably would have been here at six o'clock. Maybe he forgot.
So, he said there's a lot of progress on Smith Road, so that's good, and they got the, uh, utility pole moved and the the line removed.
They're cutting trees to move lines.
Okay.
There was a bunch of trees that they didn't schedule.
See the trees down.
Yep.
They gotta, they're really fucking good.
Yeah. Good.
Yep, they're doing a good job, we got their first invoice today.
Is it what we expected?
I didn't, I didn't cut the check today, because we have I think thirty or forty-five days to pay it, but they're doing a good job.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, um, are the Smiths buying the Chamberlain property?
They are supposed to be, yep.
So that'll be good.
Yep.
Um, and then you were going to check on how much the GeoGrid?
Yep, so here's the, here's the printout for the GeoGrid that we looked at. Um, this is what I, this is what I printed out when we did the mitigation pricing, when I did, put together the mitigation plan and the pricing. Um, I checked the price again for the same exact sizing, and it was two hundred and thirty-eight dollars or something, so the more you buy, the cheaper it gets. Um, so.
And this is for basically twenty-seven feet?
Yes. This is a section of eight feet by twenty-seven feet.
See, that is a little stuff.
Yeah, that's what I figured, it had to be, it, and it, they've got a multitude of different things, you've got to kind of pinpoint exactly what you're using it for, whether it's like erosion, sediment control, or road, what type of road. Yeah, and it has different depths and, yeah.
And have we ordered this yet?
We have not.
Hmm.
What is this stuff made of? Is it?
It's almost like that, um, the stuff you put down for silt fence.
Yeah.
It's almost like that black silt fence type with plastic.
So hard. Hard plastic?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it says HDP.
I'll stiff it up once you go saying that.
Yep.
You drive on before they say, you know, proper crunch. Oh, really?
Yeah, well, I wouldn't drive on it.
Try it, yeah.
Yeah, we, and we won't fill it with sand, we'll fill it with crush, one and a half inch crush.
So this is not as bad as I thought it was, it's, um, priced in hella, than eighty, ninety thousand hours, it's blue.
No.
Yeah, I was kind of worried about that too, and then.
I wouldn't do that.
Okay, have the headwalls, things like that been sorted?
Um, Adam gave me the count of headwalls today, so he was gonna check with Chickie on his pricing, uh, since he's local. And then I was going to reach out to the ma, the fabricator who we got pricing from down in Concord to see if his prices are still good and, you know, compare apples to apples, because trucking, I mean, we may pay a thousand or two thousand dollars just for trucking to get them up here, where, you know, if we get them from Chickie, then it's right here, it's.
Right.
So.
Price is the same.
Plan, the plan is to try and get them ordered this week so that we can get going on that. And then I've got to talk to Adam and to pinpoint exactly where we want to focus on the GeoGrid so we can
get that order, because we don't know if there's a
Right.
waitlist, wait time or not.
Right.
Okay. Are there other things that we need to order to continue the mitigation?
No, I mean, he's already taught, we've got a bunch of stone at Beatty, we've got stone at L and L. Um, they've been getting stone from Chickie, so we're, I think we're okay for that.
Yeah, it looks like there's been lots of gravel.
Lots of gravel. Yep.
Okay, so he's proceeding with the mitigation work then, where he, as soon as he could see supplies?
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, he needs the supplies in order to do it, so, yeah.
And then everything's fine with FEMA when you have the meetings with them in terms of reimbursement and so far?
Yes, so I have a meeting with her tomorrow, um, tomorrow at nine, so, ten, at ten. So, um, I'll see where we are as far as the one project that was waiting to go into obligation for funding, now that we're past the Fourth of July, she should be able to have some additional information for me on that.
Okay, that's a project that's completed?
No.
No, okay.
No, none of the, none of the projects are completed.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I take that back. The only project completed is the A and E for Smith Road. None of the other projects are completed because they include the mitigation work.
Okay.
But that doesn't stop them from funding it, from giving us.
From making the commitment to fund it.
Correct.
With the dollar bill.
And.
And actually.
And giving us the money.
Okay.
Yes, they've got to give us the money for what we spent.
Yeah. Okay, and then the pay is the difference as we finish it.
And I've got addition, I've got the additional invoices for Ekman already, and I've got the first, um, pay estimate for, um, Jay McDonald, so I'll be talking to her about that tomorrow.
Okay. Look, it sounds like there's progress being made.
It's brutal, brutally slow with FEMA.
And it's a lot of work.
It is. It is.
Okay. For new business, return checks.
So we've had a slew of returned checks lately, um, I would like to say generally when someone gets a notification that they've had a bounce check, they come in and they take care of it right away. But we've got some people who have not responded at all. So if it's for a vehicle registration, I generally send it to Troop F, and they go and talk to the person who wrote the bad check. They tell, give them a deadline and let them know that their registration's going to be suspended if they don't make good on the payment. Um, the, um, chief, or I don't know what his official title is, said that we have an option of going of going after someone who writes a bad check. But there's a process that we have to do, where like, we send them the information via registered mail, certified mail, return receipt. If they don't respond, then it can go to court and they can have an injunction put against them, they'd have to pay our our fees and landing legal fees and so on and so forth, but it's, uh, it's a formal action and a specific.
Are these checks for taxes or?
Um, reg, car registration and, um, transfer station fees.
And so.
I mean, right now, we charge people twenty-five doll, twenty-five dollar fee for non-sufficient funds, but sometimes we are charged fees in excess of that from the bank.
We talk about raising those fees at some point?
We did, but they've never been, it's never been done.
Okay. Because I know, I mean, for years, it's been twenty-five dollars that the banks will charge.
Right.
But if it's more, is it thirty or?
I don't remember, I'd have to talk with Nancy on Wednesday, because I, I don't.
Yeah, because we should be trying to more of its banks trying, that's more.
Right, yeah, I just, I don't, I don't handle that stuff. I just know about it, she tells me about it, but I don't handle the details.
And how much money are we talking about? With, I mean, how many of these checks, and what's the?
Right now, I think we have four checks that have come back. One, I think it was a couple hundred dollars, one was a hundred dollars for the transfer station, one was seventeen dollars for bags, I mean, it's
So.
Yeah.
I mean, I really think people should be responsible and not overdraft in account. And.
Yeah.
You know, we've already incurred the expense, it's a tra, transfer station. But if we start, I guess we go through at least a notification process, then we're incurring deposit certified mail.
Yep.
What?
It's almost ten bucks, ten, it's nine seventy-six or nine, and I think postage is going up this week.
Yeah.
Again, so, yeah, it's rounded up to ten.
Yeah. I think it's also the principle of the matter.
Well, and you get to the point where it's like, how many, we don't have a whole lot of repeat offenders, there's a couple. At what point do you say, okay, we're no longer taking checks from you?
And the transfer station is kind of the problem, because they can't cash.
Right.
Which is a good, good thing to check.
Right.
So our, I mean, repeat offenders, I think we should stop taking checks, but then it falls on Kyle to.
To look at that list and say, oh, I can't take a check from you.
Yeah, that puts him in a situation.
Yeah.
That may not be fair to him.
Yeah. Well, the other thing, I, um, I don't think you do it enough, you know, if it's, if it's for the transfer station and it's repeated, then, uh, you're, you're beginning from, uh, transfer station to the payout.
But again, then again, how do we enforce it? That puts Kyle in a comfortable situation.
And he's not watching people when they're going and putting trash in the dumpster, you know what I mean? If it's really busy, he's not.
I think it's going to get to the point where you're going to need to people that.
I mean.
Seeing that we're talking about the transfer station, um, I called to make sure that the mattresses that were were paying nineteen dollars a mattress to send them off to sell it, and I asked them, I says, are you taking those, or what's the story? And they will arrange a truck to come, but then you'll have to pay trucking. So I mean, uh, we could have, uh, Kyle with a trailer and all there, and then you, but then we, and we need to go up on the mattresses, so if Kyle delivers them, we should go up to at least twenty-four, twenty-five dollars mattress to pay for the, the gas and whatever.
And the time and the wear.
Exactly.
Care and everything.
Yeah.
Um, why won't they just put them on top of a load and take care of them?
Because they, they got, they, they can't put them in the, in the landfill, it's gonna go to a, the, uh, where they re.
Where they re, I mean, that's a good thing, but they can't pull it off, because I thought Carver was pulling them off the load.
You got a ton of them there now, and that's, even it's straight through, they're not, none of them doing any one, and they're actually going up on their prices big time. I think they go up to thirty, one thirty. Yeah. Thirty-eight, something like that. And, uh, and plus, uh, the state is pushing a, that's what it's called, three dollars minimum rate across the board. And everybody's gonna be paying extra.
For what?
For, for uh. For, for uh, signage.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So um, I'd like to, I'd like to make motion that we up the prices on the mattress. And anything, you know, sofas, sofas, whatever, you know, to cover our costs. And I don't know, maybe it'd be better if uh, if one of us or a couple of us, whatever goes to. Uh, Kyle, cuz she knows. What's going on with prices and we can write it down.
Yeah. Cuz I know when we talked about prices last time and I don't have all the prices in my head, I know we updated a lot of things, tires. The risk is that we get more ti- more mattresses by the side of the road.
Yeah, we get them now anyways, it's, it's just gonna be a matter of uh, hopefully the state police can catch who's doing it.
Yeah, but that's.
And you get them, you get them anyways, we can't take a loss. Because somebody can't uh, won't go to the transfer station with their, with their runners.
Yeah.
We're taking, we're, we're taking a big loss right now, over fifty percent.
I don't remember.
We're only checking what, eight, nine dollars the.
It depends.
No, ten dollars.
Ten dollars for mattresses?
It's almost, it's almost fifty percent.
It depends on the size, it's eight for twin, ten for double, twelve for queen, fifteen for king. But we've got such a huge pile of them there because they stopped taking them. And I reached out to Mark and he never got back to me on what they were going to do with.
Well, I know that it's not. Uh, I think uh. DES sees that we got them at the uh. Highway garage, there's a big no-no.
What's that?
We got, we had a pile at the highway garage, keeping them, keeping them dry. But the uh, DES, nothing's gonna frown on that.
Are they still there?
Yeah, what's that?
They will.
Yeah.
There is a place that actually takes mattresses, that's what they specialize. But they're expensive.
Right.
They're thirty, I think it's thirty two dollars.
Yeah.
Each mattress.
And we're getting a deal and a half right now, we need to let the, take them and drop them off and let the, let Gasola deal with them, nineteen dollars is pretty good price.
Yeah, so we need to get them there, so. So we have a couple of things, we have the mattresses we have, which we need to get rid of.
Right.
Is it one truckload?
Do you know how many is that the highway?
Uh, right now, I think there's twenty one or twenty two.
Can they, can he load that all up on one trailer and do one trip?
You could.
Yeah.
Special way.
Yeah.
That, because they spread.
Plus the ones that are at the transfer station, could they all go in one?
I mean.
Plus the ones at the transfer station, could they all go in one?
One trip.
As many as you can. Now, the, the outfit that, that I was talking about. They're coming up and getting them out of Littleton right now. They, they take fifty at a crack. But if we were. To bring them down. I don't know, it'd be a dramatic price reduction.
Yeah, but you're going all the way to Mass, aren't you?
It's uh, just south of Nashville. That's a long ride, yeah.
Yeah.
We're not gonna beat uh, Gasola's price right now.
That's four hours.
Yeah.
But that is four hours of overtime to gas.
You know.
Yeah, two down. The problem is, two down, two up.
So I, so I think for the mattresses on hand, we should get rid of them as soon as possible.
You're right, I agree.
Can we go without a truck for? Long enough to?
Just a day.
Yeah.
Just one day.
Yeah, and then thing about it is uh, if.
You can't bring them.
Don't date that one, didn't bring them down.
Yeah.
Back, yeah.
And then uh, and then from then on out, we can plan on, I'll can bring them to. For sell, so we won't get the truck people. Cuz we're gonna get charged. So they will come up and get them.
But they'll charge us for trucking.
Alright, everybody has.
Probably four hundred and seventy five bucks.
Okay, well, I think we should have. Transfer stations have, deliver them to.
Yeah.
With Adam, I already made a note.
We needed a motion on that?
Yeah.
I make a motion that would get. I mean, we're already, we're already supposed to take, so we don't think we need a motion.
Motion, just gotta do it.
Just, you're just doing it different.
For the existence, what?
Yeah, I don't think you need a motion, you're just handling it a different way.
Yeah.
It's still going to the same place, it's just Kyle's taking it instead of them picking it up.
Yeah.
So with that said, if that's taken care of. I'd like to make a motion that we up the prices on mattresses to at least twenty four, but not twenty five dollars a mattress right now.
For what size?
Well, I'm hearing it's that the price of that is straight through no matter the size.
No one's gonna pay twenty five bucks to get rid of a twin mattress, they're gonna be all over the place. I think we need to look and see what the other towns are. We did this before, we need to look and see what the other towns are charging and then. Follow suit with that. Uh, what was it in twenty three, we adjusted the prices?
Isn't it last year? Wasn't it pretty recent?
I don't know, I don't remember. I can walk.
October twenty eighth, twenty four. So we did the comparison.
Okay, so that's not that long ago.
No, I, that was pretty recent. So mattresses, we had. Fifteen, twelve and eight at that point.
Right, that's what we still have.
Okay. Lancaster, berries by side, they size for the, and they had twenty three. Whitefield was like fifteen and ten. Bransonia was twenty three.
That's a year ago, right?
It was October. So nine months ago. Close.
So we could, we could still have um, twin, we could leave twin at the nineteen. And then we could go up to twenty three for the full and the queen.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, and King. We wanna do a little bit more for King.
I would do more.
Twenty five for King.
Yeah.
Somebody needs to figure out a way to recycle mattresses cheaper.
No, I think it's a lot labor intensive, they pull it apart.
Yeah.
The springs out, it's.
Junkies, junkers used to do that, you put a mattress at your roadside in Illinois and they used to. They just would strip it all and put the fabric in a bag for you and everything, then take your metal.
This place is called Tough Stuff Recycling. In near Pittsburgh, Mass. And Littleton right now is paying thirty five dollars per unit.
But is that unit just a mattress or just a box spring, or is it a combined unit? Do you know?
I, I don't know for sure, but it's, they're coming up and picking fifty of them at, at crack.
So for Littleton, they're coming up from Mass to get them?
Uh huh.
Well, I think we should look into it.
What's your phone number?
What's their phone number?
Yeah. You don't know? I can look it up.
We have our, the box springs.
What it is, is these people are from New England, they're the only ones that have actually figured out how to. Take them and tear them apart.
Yeah. And then.
Because of the location is why it's so expensive.
So for pricing, shall we go up same amount for boss, box springs?
Yeah.
That gets pretty expensive if somebody gets rid of a.
Yeah, yeah.
But mattress and a box spring, it's twice the cost, but.
Yeah, it is what it is, we, we don't control what we gotta, they tried to.
I mean, if you. Buy an appliance, you have to pay for them to take the old one away.
Right.
Okay.
And I think the sofas too, I don't know. Cuz sofa has got this kinda same material on.
That just usually goes into our demolition dumpster.
Yeah, and we have sofas running from eight to twenty two.
Right, well, we can leave that alone for now to change.
And we can check about this other option. Cuz we're getting charged for city recycling to Littleton now too, right or no?
I've not gotten a bill, the only, the only bill I got was for um.
Electronic rates.
For electronics.
Signed, but that's who paying that for a long time.
Yeah.
Okay. So your motion, Tom, then is to increase the, the prices for mattresses?
Yeah.
Twenty three and twenty five.
Yeah.
And the same price increase for box springs.
Yeah. Good second on that, yeah, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you'll update our price list online and then it, um, Kyle will?
Yes.
And then you'll check on.
And I also like to consider uh, going to stickers on residents' vehicles. Cuz we get a lot of out of status, we don't know who was from near the wing. And uh, we shouldn't be paying both. Uh, cuz I've been there before and I've seen out of state, then he recognized that, who they are. It's a little bit of work, you know, to get it together, but, you know, cuz you gotta, gotta have a number and it's gotta match their address, you know.
I mean, we used to have stickers back.
Yeah.
Fifteen years ago. So the stickers would be for. I mean, certainly anybody who has a house, you know, they might have out of state plates because it might not be here year round.
Right, that's the thing about it, is if they, if they got a house here, then they have a right to use that.
Yeah, or even if they have a lot here, they don't have to have a house.
Exactly, so.
And I'm wondering, if we have a situation like where people are bouncing checks, a sticker's hard to get back. But a hang tag might be easier to.
Yeah.
Take back.
Yeah, but hang tags, you could just take it, put it in anyone's car.
That's true.
Like there.
But then if you have, you know, if you've got a household with two cars. You know, do you need a sticker for both cars or can you switch the hang tag too?
Well, the thing about it is, we're not gonna charge you, I wouldn't think we'd have to charge them for stickers.
Yeah.
And uh, and, and if they got two vehicles that are registered to that same address, then let them have it.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's the way I see it.
If people are just, if people are throwing stuff away and paying for it though, I mean, do we think that there's a lot of? People from other towns or Vermont that are bringing stuff to our transfer station, I mean, if they're paying for it to get rid of it. Is it?
There's a new ordinance to uh, that they, like um. Each town can only. Upload their own stuff for that town. It goes through DES.
That's for, that's just for demolition.
Yeah, but they're trying to get it, it's actually for a stick, like you saying, a sticker on your vehicle. So that it's, that town is. Getting there. Instead of having somebody else throwing it away. From another town.
Well, I guess I think about the instance of my son doesn't have a truck, I mean, he's down in Maryland, but if, but let's. Put him here, he doesn't have a truck. So when we go down. Then he loads up stuff that he needs to get rid of into the truck. And we don't, and now he has to show his driver's license. But if we had to have sticker, then how would he ever get, would he, did he have to pay somebody that has a sticker to? To get rid of his trash, his uh, like furniture or mattresses or even trash? It's, it seems like you should be able to take a.
Hang tag.
Yeah.
Cuz I, I mean, you've got a point, cuz I. Like a couch and a chair, when I had that loaner truck, cuz my car was in the shop, if I didn't do that, I would have. Asked a friend to take it for me, cuz it's the way I can take it in my car. I think we need to do a little bit more thought about this, like how to implement it.
But I, I think it could be a burden on getting, we don't have a truck, which would be, then they might have to. Pay somebody rather than borrow, I don't know, it, it just seems, seems a little funky.
Yeah, I mean, I know back like fifteen years ago, there were stickers. And you get them when you pay your taxes or whatever. I don't know what their rationale was for dis. Maybe it was. I care.
Fifteen years ago, I didn't even know Dalton existed.
So let's table that, we can, I think we need more thought about that.
Yeah.
Kind of. On things that we need to know that.
They're trying to do is get more, where is the stuff coming from and like places?
Yeah.
So that people can't just, oh, they're, they're open, boom.
Right.
Well, this guy, and just doing the hot spot, you have to have a sticker. Or some type of identification that yes, you belong, yes or no.
Yeah.
They're trying to get it so that they can figure out how much materials are being. And by going into the different town.
Yeah.
They're able to get a better understanding.
And then they already gather information from every town about what's disposed.
But I, that's one of the, I just found out about it last, last week.
Okay, so meanwhile, we'll increase the, the cost of disposing mattresses and box springs.
Yeah.
And we'll think about stickers or some type of way of um, controlling who's using the transfer station. V O I P phones, just voice over internet protocol.
Yep, Spectrum contacted me regarding um.
Thank you.
V O I P phones, so they currently have a, have a program. Where they take care, they actually provide you with the phones um, free of charge. And they basically look at your current phone bills, you know, say, hey, how could we help you save money? So we would get six um, six stations or six seats is what they call them. So uh, six phones, then there's the V O I, V O I P service package and um, then uh. An adapter for our fax machine, they're saying that they could do this for us for two hundred and twenty dollars a month. Which would get rid of Spectrum. Or consolidate charter communicate, Spectrum consolidate, no, consolidated. Who does our phones, consolidated, which is like four or five hundred dollars a month that we pay.
And we have, don't have a very good phone system.
We do not, and our phone system is, sometimes it rings, sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes it rings on one line and you have to get up and go from one side of the off, one office to the other office, cuz you can't pick it up. Anywhere but that, yeah. And the only person that, that manages or knew how to manage and program. And maintain that phone system died from COVID. So there is no one else.
Or consolidated.
No, for our phone system, for the actual phone system that we have.
Yeah.
The hardware.
Cuz we don't even know how to change the message on it, right?
Yeah, you can like back way into going through a programming. Yeah, I was able to do that, but it, yeah, it was, it took me about three days. Cuz I'm not an IT person. So. I've already reached out to our, to um, our IT people and said, hey, we're looking at this possibility. What, if anything, would be required to make sure that it works with our current? What, if anything, would be required to make sure that it works with our current network? And the network that you guys are upgrading us to the end of the month.
And. How robust, our internet is robust. For the ethernet, it's just our wireless, we're still as kind of.
I sent them a ticket.
Okay. Well, it sounds like it would save money and work better. So you'd be able to pick up phones? Like if you're at one phone and you hear another phone ringing, you'd be able to pick it up, right?
They would, well, you could program it to where every, every desk phone would ring. Every time a call comes in, every desk phone would ring.
Is that good or bad?
That's good.
Okay. Cause I mean, we have basically. Three different offices.
Well, we have the tax collector phone, the town clerk phone, the assessor phone, the assessor slash treasurer phone. Then we have the phone in the select board, but then there's also a separate phone that's not. It has its own line. That there's a, just a wireless phone connected to it, and then we have the fax line, so we have five.
So that. One line, what do we need that for?
I have no idea. It was here when I got here. I don't, I have no idea. Maybe if the phone systems go down, I don't.
We should find that. I don't know how you find that out, but.
I mean, the only time we've ever used it is when the alarm guy is here. And he couldn't use his cellphone, cause you don't get any. Service in the building, cause it's made of brick.
But it was just like an extra line? So we should probably get a code without that one.
Well, I don't know, cause we need a phone, we need a phone line for this alarm system, so I don't.
Oh, that's separate.
Yeah. Okay, that could be connected to that. I don't know. I, there's a lot of things that I just look at it and go, it was here when I got here. I haven't gotten to that mystery yet.
And. Do, and like the fire department highway, they just have cell phones, right?
Yes.
So they don't have any landlines.
Correct.
And.
I mean, we could put landlines there, but for what? There's, there's no one ever sitting there. There's not anyone sitting there all the time, so that doesn't make any sense to do that.
So you're starting to look into this, but we're not ready to move forward yet, right?
I don't think so. I mean, their price is really good. Um. I mean, ultimately, it's gonna cut our bill in half.
Are there other competitors out there?
I'm not sure. I haven't had a chance to do that. I was gonna get in touch with BIDIM.
Yeah.
To see.
Is there any other deal?
I'm sure there are. It's just finding one that is gonna give you the best deal and. I mean, it's kind of nice. They lock into that price for five years.
Oh, that is good.
So.
They would allow you to put maybe a different message for town clerk, tax collector and stuff for it.
I don't see why not.
Rather with this one, like you go into it, but then. I just, I've never figured out how it works.
I. I don't know. I've never called here.
You're trying to call yourself?
Nope.
So you just continue investigating this?
Yeah, yeah.
You any, any other please?
Yeah, um. I can't remember if, I don't think we knew about this at the last meeting. DES has um. A program set up where they will come out and do provide test kits for all residents on um well water. To have their wells tested. I guess they have found that there's um concerning levels of uranium and radon. In the, in the stone up here, and so they're providing testing kits for different towns. Um, Ron had a preliminary meeting as the health officer with them today. They're planning on doing a presentation, which would be approximately an hour long. And then they would supply test kits and then we would just need to set up a couple of days and times that. They could drop off test kits and then DES would come pick them up. And then DES contacts the resident and lets them know what the results are and lets them know. What they should do if anything, if they need to remedy an issue with their water.
Um, I thought I were gonna see an email. So do you have to come to that information session in order to get the test kit?
I don't know that. It says here that they'll set up the presentation and supply a test kit, so I don't know if they'll just leave test kits here. Where people could get them. Um, they will send out a postcard, so eventually there'll be more information. This was just a. Very preliminary meeting. Um, they've already tested like um. Littleton and Franconia and areas like that, so we're just kind of next on their list.
And what's the timing of this? When will they be doing it?
Probably looking at September or October.
Do we need to let them know we're interested?
Ron already let them know. It's free, so he said, yeah, it sounds like a great idea.
So. Any other updates?
Um, we received, this goes back to FEMA, we received the um, the estimate. For Ekman Engineering for the construction and closeout phase of Smith Road. It's approximately thirty five thousand dollars. And the first invoice that we paid today is included in that number.
So I'm not keeping track when I had a penalty.
Uh, the engineer's probably gonna be roughly eighty thousand dollars.
And then there's a construction, which is.
No, that inclu, well, the can, that includes Ekman's construction fee, but then there's the construction, which is by. Five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That road will outlast every other road in this town, I'm sure.
So.
Um, and then we did receive letters of gratitude from um. Casa of New Hampshire, which is port appointed special advocates for children. And from Tri County CAP for the, them receiving their budgeted um.
For the funds to your.
The, the procreations, yeah.
Any other business?
Um. No, we have one non-public.
They probably two, we've got welfare, right?
Yep.
And then legal advice.
Okay.
Um, do we have any public comments?
I got a few moments before we go to the public.
Okay.
I even uh, looking at my paperwork and uh, it's been over twenty years and I think where we're dealing with. The seller and and the, that money and everything, we should have an internal control assessment done again. I'd like to make a motion to have that done.
What, what is that? What do you, what do you mean, like an internal controls of financials?
Yeah, they, they come in and they look at everything uh.
So that's what our auditor does every year.
Yeah.
Well, you said something about Casella.
Well, I'm just thinking, having this done before, it's uh, be if and when that happens. Before uh, this uh, throwing two million dollars in, you know, in the, on the uh. Everything else, this one, I guess this is what I'm trying to say. But this was done, this one here was done in July two thousand and five, but there was one done uh in two thousand and eleven.
What is this?
It's done by municipal resources and they are doing our bookkeeping now.
Yep.
Um.
So there was one done in two thousand and eleven, you said?
I think so.
So if we were still using an electronic auditor, I think that would be a great idea. Um. But we have a professional audit company as part of that.
They give you the rundown of the do's and don'ts and what you should be doing and, you know, things like that.
Yeah, and they, they look, so they pull sample transactions and they make sure you have all the documentation that you've often, all the checks and balances that you should do.
Yeah. But that, that's electronic, I think, I, I just like to speak that idea. And we do this.
Chris? Chris is asking how much it would cost.
We would have to call and find out. Don't know that.
I mean, on top of, we're already, so we're already paying a professional monitor, right?
Correct. At about. Ten thousand plus or minus a thousand, and then we're using the same company municipal resources to do our bookkeeping, so that's. Helps with the separation of duties, which is part of internal control. So if we weren't already doing those things, I would say it'd be a great idea, but I think it's really redundant from what we're already doing.
I'm looking to a little bit more than I'd like.
Well, I can always contact uh, Christian Purcell. He's the, he's one of the controlling members of municipal resources. Again, that's, that's the software that we use for our accounting, and I can ask him what he thinks. I mean. He's the type of person who would come across and go, well, you're doing this, you're doing this, you're doing this. Let me look at your audit. Yeah, you're doing everything. I mean, but he'll. He would tell us.
And our, the software we're using is probably another internal control too. Um, compared to the footbooks we have been using.
Was this done on Dalton? Is this Dalton?
Uh.
It doesn't say on the front. It just says it was prepared by.
Yeah, but she's gonna check into it, let her do the check and find out what they charge if they go, if, if we do do well.
And it looks like a lot of these, a lot of these items are things that we do. I mean, that's why we have, like, I know I've been questioned a couple of times by Pam. Asking why I don't do payroll or why I don't do the bookkeeping or why I don't do the reconciliations. That's why, cause it's, it's another level of. Separation of duties. That's why we have a bookkeeper and the bookkeeper does the payroll. The bookkeeper does the reconciliations. And then the accountant. Gets copies of all of those things randomly. He sends a list randomly and. I have to show him beginning to end, like you received the invoice, was there a pick ticket, was there a contract? Where, when was it paid? Where's the copy of the check? When did it clear? Uh, for receivables, it's the same thing. It's, did you submit an invoice? What are you getting paid for? Where did the money go in your, your account, in your accounting system? Where's the deposit ticket showing it was deposited, including the receipt from the bank, that type of stuff? So. It, I don't think it's ever a bad idea to do an audit. I'm all for it, but a lot of these things I think may be covered. Again, I'll ask Christian.
Sure.
I don't think this is for Dalton.
I don't, oh, but anyways.
I, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't have any name.
Did you have another item?
Yeah, um, I would like to uh, make a motion, thank you.
You're welcome.
Set up uh, in serving meeting with legal. For the select one, for uh, for some legal guidance.
And the topic?
Uh, the, well, I wanted the uh, HCA committee wording. I wanna know about that, cause I haven't heard nothing on that from him. And I also.
So the HCA committee wording, I don't understand.
The, what was passed through the. The wording that was passed through uh.
Oh, I thought that was, I mean, he was at, there at that meeting and he said it was.
Yeah, I wanna understand it. That's just a quite, it was just one of the questions I wanna ask him. The other thing was the uh, the uh.
Are you talking about for the, I'm sorry, for the Warren article? The final wording of the Warren article?
No, the wording on the. The A, the HCA committee, committee that was passed to have four people to, you know, the committee.
That's the Warren article, so that was the.
Funny, I couldn't find it in the darn book.
Well, it's not in the book, because the book has the town meeting minutes from the previous year. So you have to look at the town meeting minutes from twenty, the twenty twenty five town meeting, which are online. That, that's why they're not in the book. The book, the book is done. The book is done for the meeting of that year, but it has the previous year's minutes in it, so all of the wording for that. Petition Warren article that was reworded and passed at town meeting twenty twenty five is in the.
Special town. That's why it's not in the, in the chain.
Oh, sorry, there's special town meeting minutes for it then. That wouldn't have been in the book, cause it was a special meeting. Thank you. My bad, I thought that was. We don't usually have meetings in the gym, so when I think of meeting in the gym, that's what I think of town meeting. So it would be the special meeting minutes from that January meeting, whatever it was.
Um, okay, anyways, with that, um, quote title manually, we want to talk more anyway. Find out about more on that letter that we sent to conservation committee, cause I see he sent us. To the conservation, but he also CC'd a hundred and seventy two people in it.
I don't know what you're talking about.
John Swan.
I know, but I don't know what you're talking about.
The email that he sent, conservation committee. I think it's something to do with the um. I can't think of the word, just my mind, I'm trying.
Only email that I saw from John recently was him saying that he was stepping down from that.
From the um, North Country Council.
Yeah.
And so the planning board.
That's true.
We should at the next meeting recommend somebody for that.
I can't think of the word, but it's to do with everything he's been doing with uh. Without the voice of football. That's what it all works out to, but anyways, um.
Well, I, I'm, I mean, I don't, I don't know what you're talking about, so you'll have to be more specific, cause I don't.
The letter we sent to him saying, stating. That's it. Appeal. Appeal, yeah.
Okay.
He's still, he's still messing around with that, he's been messing with it.
I haven't seen anything recently.
No, he probably.
He sent an email last week.
Yeah.
Regarding the appeal?
Yeah.
He did?
The email he sent last week was asking if they, he did send an email last week asking if um.
Sent, sent it to the conservation.
If they sent, if they, if DES had received a new, the new application.
Yeah.
Uh, or if they had received a request for extension because the time had passed. And there was a request for an extension that was granted and he did forward that. But that was it. It wasn't anything about the appeal. It was asking about their permit, whether they. That was the only thing, that's the only thing that he sent last week.
Yeah, that had nothing to do with the appeal that you're talking about.
The uh, the hostile uh, findings, someone that I wanna find out.
So that, that's why I was gonna have a legal.
Cause you were supposed to do that.
And I got, I got response from Nate today, so that's what we're gonna talk about in non-public.
Right.
So the HCA committee, I mean, that language was passed in Warren article. I don't know what. What's with this.
So it passed, it's okay. I just wanna understand it and I wanna talk to legal about it, the understanding of the language. It's so, it's okay. It's been passed, it's fine. I don't have a problem with that. I just want legal guidance. I wanna understand it. So, that's uh. Where I'm heading.
Okay.
I make that motion that we haven't seen. Or I can make it after we have a meeting, non-public, whatever.
And then come back in public and.
Why would you make that non-public? That sounds like.
I didn't say I was gonna do it on public.
When we come back, cause there is another legal issue.
Right.
That we're gonna talk about, um, because it's legal advice and then we may act on it or not. Um. Yeah, I, I just thought. Can, can you articulate what question you have and then maybe we can answer it for you without having to go to legal?
No, because I don't have it in front of me. I have, I've been looking and looking and didn't know what it was.
Yeah, it, it's, I'm sure it's on the webpage.
Let's uh, let's do the uh, non-public and then we'll come back and discuss it from there.
Was there any other public comment?
Yes. Any public comments?
Public comments? Do you have any public comments?
I guess as a public comment, I would just um. Just again. Reiterate what was iterated during that special meeting that. A lot of money is being spent for legal. And I think you guys should be a little bit more conservative in. And spending that money. We've never spent so much or gone to legal so much. As, as in the last year, um, I just, I just worry about our town budget and taxpayers.
Yeah, and do you think once you read the actual wording of the Warren article, you might be more comfortable with it, Tom?
I don't know. I, I'd have to look at it soon.
The other thing on the HCA meeting, that was part of the materials that went out for the first meeting that we had. That Warren article, the wording is provided. So you might have it in your HCA Committee meeting materials.
Well, I would do that. Uh, it's not there. I have a special place for it. Anyways, like, can I tell me where it was?
I guess if I could, um, since we're still kinda open. We, the last thing that I have regarding the picnic area and. Maintenance and cleanup of the picnic area, it was discussed a multitude of times. April first of twenty-four, Tom said that he would like to create a committee to maintain the area for continued public use.
And I went down, pointed it up.
That, in twenty-four, before the floods, yep. And then it's kind of confusing in here because it says, Tom motion to continue to maintain the area with volunteers and our mowing contract. But it was never in the mowing contract. And then in May of twenty-four. We talked about adding the Dalton picnic area. Mowing to Nelson's quote, Nelson never gave us a price after I asked them for it. And then in June twenty-fourth of twenty-four, um. We had talked about it. I had mentioned that Nelson did not give a price for mowing the space. Joe Beth reiterated that the area was supposed to be maintained by a volunteer and then we started talking about signs and parking. Then in July eighth of two thousand twenty-four. And it was discussed that the Dalton picnic area was cleaned up by volunteers. The picnic table was placed in the area. With a fence in process, Adam ordered the signs and real, um, ordered the parking related signs. Um, obviously, then July eleventh, we had the flood. And then July twenty-second, the last time it was mentioned, we talked about. The fact that it was damaged by the flood that occurred on July tenth through the twelfth to twenty-four. And at that time, there were no plans provided for refurbishing. And that was the last time we had talked about anything.
They even put a picnic table down there and it's downstream now.
Yeah, it's probably on the river somewhere. So that's. Yes, that was one of the items that I, I needed to look up. So that, that's where it is, is it was damaged by the floods. No one had ever talked about refurbishing it or anything else. So that, just. Just so that we have an update on that topic.
Seems like the whole impetus for it was that volunteers should want to maintain it, as I recall.
Yeah, Mike Trudeau said he was gonna take, take care of it, so.
So we don't need to make any action on that one.
My apologies, I just remembered something for um, open discussions or public discussion. I know you guys wanna. I just wanted to, um, when Carolyn Keats was in talking to the Planning Board, she brought up something that we've. Discussed in the past and it never, we never got closure on it. And that turnaround. Uh, cross from her property, there's a lot of bad stuff that seems to go on there. Um, and I recall a year or two ago, it was discussed in a select board meeting. And I, are we, is there anything the town can do or state?
And then owns the, the state don't own it.
The turnaround.
The state don't even own the turnaround.
Well, the guy who owns that property, I'm sure. If, if there's something that, I mean, he, as far as what happens in the turnaround, I mean, he doesn't maintain the turnaround, right?
That used to be the old road Dalton.
Now, as far as the, the, the.
Does the state plow the turnaround?
State does.
So it's plowed for like school buses and things. So it is maintained by the state.
But the school buses don't even really use it. So.
Should the state be responsible for what's going on there?
Oh, it is.
Because I think Derek would be happy to allow the town or the state to put cameras up if it's allowed.
So we talked a few meetings, a few months ago about cameras. And then the question was. Because you need some type of cell service or something and there's some logistics.
Oh, it's horrible. Cell service is horrible there, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I was talking to Mike, Karen, uh. Uh, he said that the, uh, we got permission with the book cameras crossroad there from uh, the.
Keats.
Excuse me?
Keats.
Okay.
The Keats, the Keats own the property across the street.
Across the street, but the turnaround is on.
But the doctor.
But if you.
It's on the doctor's property.
Yes, but if you put the cameras across the street, you can see what's happening.
That is true. And it. There's some pretty unsavory characters there, but I mean, it also seems like the state should have some.
Well, why can't we just close? If the state doesn't use it, doesn't need it. And it belongs to the property owner. It sounds like that's what you're saying, is if the property owner owns it, why can't he just?
The state only has right away from Santa Line now.
So why can't the property owner just close it?
So if we bring this up to the.
But how would, would the property owner would have to put a fencing or something or? Guard rail?
Would this, would the state put something up? Well, you work for the state, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, it just seems like since the state put the, put it there, then.
They put it back.
Put it back. I mean, I'm, should is, it's not, I, I, it's, it's just a word I'm using. I don't know, but, but. It, it's not good for Dalton. Yeah.
Can we also ask the state, the state troopers to make more patrols by there?
Yeah.
Well, we, we only have them.
It's a state road.
So many. I mean, they do, they patrol. They, yeah, oh, yeah.
They're, but then, yeah, they're not there all the time.
Yes. Okay, so I'm sorry, I just, I just wanna kinda up. Bring that back up again, cuz it's been a while. And when she said that, I was, I was like, oh, that's right, didn't we have something going on? So.
So how much would cameras cost? Probably a couple hundred dollars.
Have to look into it. A, a good one, one that actually uh, you can actually go on your phone to see it.
Probably a few hundred bucks.
Yeah, a few hundred bucks for a good one.
I'm gonna say, like, I mean, an Apple camera thing is probably, or the Ring camera.
But you know, you, if you did that, you still have to, you have to put a sign camera. Because if uh, some lady stops in the middle of the night to take a pee and you get a picture of her, you can get sued.
Well, really, you can't because she's in public. She's, she's, she's doing it in public and you can't. Sue someone for recording you in public cuz you're in public.
True, because we don't own that land. I don't know anything about the land or on that side of the road. The sign would have to be on that side of the road.
I don't know.
We can look into it.
Have to look into it. I don't know the.
Yeah, thanks, guys. It's just I, it, I just hate. Whatever's happening there to spill out to the rest of town.
So you'll, you'll ask the state, I'll look into, yeah, I'll see what I can find on my side.
Okay, I mean, cuz if they could put even a guard rail there and block it off, so people couldn't drive back there, at least that would be deterrent.
All right, do you guys want me to go to the other, into the hallway?
We'll probably go in the other room just because it's Selina with the.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Videos, so.
Are we going to non-public now?
Um, I make a motion going to non-public for welfare and legal.
Are you guys gonna vote on that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Bye. Thank you.
Straight crooked something. We're pausing the recording to go into non-public.
I made sure not to.
Not to sing.
Okay, I make a motion that we. Seal the minutes for non-public number one, welfare. All in favor? For number two, would be pretty general, so I don't think we need to seal them. At this point, we're not going out to legal. Right? So we're all set? Okay, I make a motion that we adjourn. All in favor?
So I'll have those printouts for you guys tomorrow. Stop by any time after one.
Sounds good. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Night.
Who's second adjourning?
Worried about you, Tom.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
All right.
Reporting off, I feel like this form now. By anybody, um, reach out.